Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Lakeville City Council meeting. It is October 7th, it is 7:00 PM. And we typically start our meeting with a moment of silence, and this week, I'd just like to recognize and bring a statement of gratitude for Mr. Ed Mako. Ed was a long-term teacher here in Lakeville. He's the third mayor of the community, and he passed away on September 20th. I'm sure a number of you may have attended his wake or memorial service last week. Ed attended a boarding school in Pennsylvania, and he served in the Air Force. We're grateful he is a veteran. And he moved to Minnesota to go to school at St. Thomas, and he moved here for his future wife, Joanne, who he had met through an Army buddy, excuse me, an Air Force buddy. They settled in the village of Lakeville back in the day, and he taught in the school and served in local government. He was on the city council, and he served as mayor in 1971, and also served a term from 1975 to 1977. During his time as mayor, there was a lot going on in the community. We were a new city, and in the first years of life as a merged city, and if you're interested in history, I've had the privilege the last couple of years to learn a lot more about the early history of the city of Lakeville. And it's fascinating when the village and the township merged, and there was some controversy that actually the state Supreme Court got involved in. So that'll be my little primer for you to check out the Historical Society and take a look at Lakeville history. It's quite interesting. But Ed was mayor back in that day. He was involved in the startup of Air Lake Industrial Park. He was involved in the startup of Panorama of Progress, or what we commonly refer to as Panaprog. And he also, and probably most notably, was involved in the acquisition and establishment of Ritter Farm Park, which is one of our premier city parks. It's more of a rustic park. It's where the dog park is on the west side of the interstate. And we have an environmental learning center, I believe that's the terminology, that is named after Ed Mako in his honor for the work he did on developing that park. So as we move into a moment of silence, I would just ask you to remember Ed and his family, and with gratitude for his service to the city. So let's rise, if you're able, for a moment of silence, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
Shall our roll call, please?
Volk.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here.
Hellier.
Here.
Lee.
Here. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for us to hear from our residents and business owners. If you have a comment, question for city council or for city staff, we allow up to three minutes. And if you are interested in speaking, please raise your hand when you're called upon. Please come to the forward, speak, come forward to the podium, speak into the microphone. And to start off, please give your name and your address. Is there anyone here this evening that has a citizen comment? Yes, sir.
Most of you are probably annoyed to see me. You've probably gotten a lot of emails from myself and my neighbors over the last couple of weeks. My name is Sean Carney. I live at 18291 Jakarta Path, three blocks off 185th and Ippava Avenue, which is the reason I'm here tonight, just to reiterate email that I had sent to the city council and county commissioner, Mary Liz Holberg, just asking for consideration to add a sidewalk to 185th. I understand things are underway. Engineering is working on it at the city and county level. Just here to reiterate how important it is to myself, my neighbors, to consider this. It's going to be a large project. I understand it's not as easy as just three blocks of sidewalks. So I appreciate your consideration and any help you can do along the way. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I appreciate you came in tonight to share that concern, and we have received a number of emails from your neighbors as well as you, and appreciate that expression of concern. I do know that city staff and the county are in discussion, and I'm not sure what final outcome will be here or what amount of time it might take, but I appreciate you folks bringing forward the concern. Thank you very much. Any other citizen comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. Mr. Miller, is there any additional agenda information for us this evening?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. So we move to presentations and introductions, and our first presentation this evening is a Rotary Club donation to King Park Mini Golf Course Project. And Mr. Henon is making his way to the podium, so I believe you're going to speak first.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Over the last two years, a group of individuals, business leaders, and the city spearheaded fundraising efforts to construct a handicap-accessible, all-inclusive nine-hole mini golf course at King Park. The mini golf courses will complement the Miracle Field and all-inclusive playground that are currently located at the site. These three amenities will allow kids with all types of abilities to participate alongside one another, enjoying recreational opportunities. To date, numerous donations have been received from individuals, civic groups, and businesses, including significant donations from the Lakeville Lions, April Development, Brackets Crossing, the Miracle League, and fundraising efforts through Lakeville Liquor Operations. Tonight, we'd like to recognize a very generous donation. The Lakeville Rotary is here tonight to donate $23,225 as a result of a pledge they made to match Lakeville Liquor's fundraising efforts through the month of July. This is the second significant donation the Lakeville Rotary has made to the project. In 2018, they donated $25,000. Over $410,000 has been received to date, either through cash contributions or through in-kind services for the project. The mini golf course is currently under construction, as noted on the previous slide, and will be completed later this fall. The course will be open to everyone free of charge next spring. So this time, I'd ask Rotarian Jay Young to present a check to the mayor and city council and to Sean Siebelz, who is representing the South Metro Miracle League tonight.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, John. My name is Jay Young, and on behalf of the Lakeville Rotary Club, I'd like to present this check to Sean and the Lakeville Baseball Association to help in the construction of the Miracle Mini Golf Project at King's Field.
Great, thank you. Can you guys move that way just a little bit, so Luke can get a picture?
Good job.
Our official photographer.
Our official photographer, I guess, this evening.
And we just wanted to thank the mayor and city council for letting us come here and present the check. And a little plug for the Rotary Club. Every May, we have our Taste of Lakeville that helps raise money that we can give away for wonderful projects like this. So thank you very much for letting us come.
Thank you very much. Did you want to say anything?
No, other than just thank you to Jay and the Rotary Club, as someone that's been a coach with the Miracle League since inception, so for the last eight to nine years, it's just a tremendous opportunity. The last fall game, it will be Thursday, that I coached for this fall before we hit winter, but a ton of great kids in this community, and it's exciting to see the community come together for something like this. It really is a great cause. If you haven't been out there and witnessed a game or been a part of it, I would encourage you to, so thank you.
Thank you very much. That's awesome. Any comments, council?
I just, I had the project of attending the groundbreaking, and it was very exciting to see all the groups together, so look forward to opening next spring.
Why don't you guys come around? We'll shake your hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again, folks, and we're grateful for the Rotary Club and all of our civic groups in terms of all the support you provide to many, many things in our community. So thank you very much. Next up, we have Brenda Visnovick, who's here to speak to us about our liquor department's 85th anniversary, and tell us about history and some events coming up.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. And Tim, if we could have the overhead for a bit? There we go. We have it pretty straight there. I would like to announce that we are very pleased to be conducting our 85th anniversary at Lakeville Liquors coming up next week. Eighty-five is the new forty. We feel younger, more invigorated than ever before, have a lot of passion for the community. And with the events, we have a number of events going on. We have some great celebration pricing that will run all week. October 14th starts our Great Bourbon Lottery, so those who are interested in collectible bourbons, we have eighty-five specialty bourbons that will be lotteryed off, raffled off. October 15th is a very special event. We have B-52 Burgers and Brew. They're going to be hosting an evening full of different burgers, some salads, and a wonderful chocolate custard, teaching everyone that wine and food pairing is very important, but beer and food pairing is almost as much of an education. October 16th, which is Wednesday, we're very pleased to announce that we have our second dairy collaboration beer coming in with Lupulin Brewing, and that will be called Restoration 37. It received that name because all of the funds and the proceeds from this beer will go to restore the 1937 Antique Fire Truck. It needs a lot of bodywork, and it needs a full mechanical repair. So we're hoping to raise about $30,000 between that and donations at the store for the Lakeville Fire Department. On October 17th, which is Thursday, we have an Orin Swift Wine and Food Pairing. If anyone's aware, Orin Swift wines are top of the line, very exquisite, and they're really going to bring in some food pairings that are unique. But the unique part about it is that everyone who attends and pays for a ticket will receive a bottle of abstract valued at $34. So this is a wonderful event that Gallow is putting on with us. And then October 19th, which is Saturday, we have a Customer Appreciation Day. We'll have the Antique Fire Truck at the Lakeville Heritage location. We will be doing brats out there, offering free brats from noon to 2:00. The other locations, we will still appreciate our customers. They get cookies and brownies. Can't get enough hot dogs everywhere. So with that, I would like to announce, because we do have a lot of history that goes back with Lakeville Liquors, and we have, the cable department did a great job of putting a little bit of video back together about our history and how long we've been here, because we are now officially the oldest business in the community of Lakeville. So, Tim, if you could roll that video?
Hi, I'm Brenda Visnovick, and this is the history of Lakeville Liquors. We have been in business for 85 years, making us the oldest business within the community of Lakeville right now. Ingraham's had us beat, but when they closed, we became the oldest operating business in the city of Lakeville. Things have changed over the years. When the repeal of prohibition occurred, cities were given the option to either control the sale of alcohol through sales of municipal liquor, or they were allowed to privatize. At the time, the city took that position. Ironically, it wasn't because of the money it could provide to the community. It was a control measure, as bootlegging was an issue within Dakota County. It was actually known that it came out of St. Paul and would actually run Dodd Road. The very first municipal liquor store was called the Rock Garden Inn. It was downtown. It's where Ben Franklin used to be. It was originally a small on-and-off sale. It had a tree growing in the middle of the facility. It had a creek that ran through it. I mean, literally, trees in a creek. Over the years, there have been a few times that the voters have got involved in making a decision regarding the liquor stores. Back in 1961, it was brought to a referendum and a vote as to whether the Rock Garden Inn should be moved to a new location, and if the city should invest the money into what is now currently Babe's Sports Bar. That vote was approved by the residents. The city operated both on- and off-sale at that location until 1987. In addition, there's a state law that requires cities, once they hit a capacity of 10,000 residents, they must go to the voters and ask them if they want to remain in business. That vote did occur back in 1981, and it was a five-to-one vote in favor of staying in the business. At that point, they decided they no longer wanted to be in the on-sale, and we moved locations out to County Road 50 and Dodd Boulevard. I've been the liquor director since 2000, but I actually started in 1983. And at that time, the store was, I would say, was about half liquor, half beer. And the beer selection was even so vastly different back in those days. The beer consisted of things such as Pifers and White Label. Returnable cases were big back then, and you could buy three cases of beer for $10 or $9.99. The liquor consisted primarily of Phillips products. It was Phillips vodka, Phillips Kentucky Blend, Phillips Canadian Whiskey. There wasn't the selection. The wine was nonexistent. I remember the biggest thing was when Ingle Nook, they came out with a French Columbarde and a Chenin Blanc, and also when Sutter Home, White Zin came out. That holiday season was a craze. Everybody needed to have the Sutter Home White Zin. It was pink, it was sweet, and people drove miles to get that product. The changes in the product selection have been immense. The changes in product pricing, I still recall the day that when a Miller Lite 12-pack was going to go above $5 a 12-pack, above $10 a case, we thought the sky was falling, and we thought we would never sell another 12-pack of beer again. As we've said, Rock Garden Inn was the first liquor store, and then we moved to the Babe's on-and-off facility. After we sold that building, store number one, which we went by numbers versus names at that time, moved to the intersection of 50 and Dodd, right next to Pro Cop Meats. That store was open. Also, the store, store number two, was opened out where Pilgrim Cleaners is on 175th and County Road 50. Store number three was located on Cedar Avenue, and that opened in 1989. That store was in the middle of a cornfield at the time, and store number four is currently the Kenrick location on 161st and 35W. So at one point, Lakeville Liquors was four-store operation. Store number three on Cedar Avenue, there were some changes to the traffic flow in which it was going to become ride-in, ride-out only. We had to come up with a solution, and that became store number three to us, which is now the Galaxy location. The revenue from the liquor department over the years has touched almost every facility, every building within this community that is city-operated. Central maintenance facility, the fire departments, the police departments. City Hall was constructed utilizing liquor funds, which ensured no debt was issued for this building. It's also gone into public funding as well, such as Ames Ice Arena, quarter of a million. It's gone into public works vehicles, snowplows, as well as purchased the property for the Dakota Heritage Library. Over the past 10 years, Lakeville Liquors has provided nearly $10 million back into the community in revenue. When customers come into our stores, we're often asking for donations. Thing about it, though, is that this fundraising mechanism has started to produce about $75,000 annually, and the funds are allocated to various events or properties. And some of these have included the Miracle Field. The most recent would be for the King Park Mini Golf, water-saving rescue equipment with the fire department, things of that nature. And probably one of the biggest is our annual food drive that goes to 360 communities, as well as the Open Door Pantry. That alone raises about $25,000 annually. Lastly, the civic partners and organizations that are out in the community, we enjoy working with them. We've worked a lot, as you know, with the Lakeville Rotary on the Taste of Lakeville. They're probably our biggest civic partner out there. That event raises about $125,000 for the Rotary, which, again, all goes back into the community. And then we also work with the Lakeville Lions through their Brew Battle Social, which has changed to the Craft Brew Review. This is very important for us to be out in the community, working with others. The future for Lakeville Liquors is extremely bright. We have the support of the community unlike any time we've ever seen before. We do have property out at County Road 70, and the city council has advised us to look into potentially moving ahead on that location in the near future. Lakeville Liquors has 85 years of history. We've had a longstanding, very extremely successful history, but we look forward to the future. We have our staff members, who we cannot thank enough for their commitment and dedication. But most importantly, we want to thank our customers. Without their continued patronage, their support, the money that we're putting into the community just wouldn't be there. So thank you to everyone.
That's awesome.
With that, I stand for any questions.
Council comments?
I would like to know how Mr. Henon doesn't age.
He drinks beer from the Lakeville Liquors.
Just a great video. You know, not often we get to see that type of history, and even myself being on council, that was a lot of history that I knew nothing about, so great video.
Okay.
I as well, it was quite something. And the tree and the creek running through the store predates me. Predates me by quite a ways, actually, but I didn't know that, so that's pretty cool. But a lot of the rest of the history I do know, and I, with gratitude, you know, having people in that some of us know, and whether it's Mr. Henon or Jim in the back room, or my father-in-law, who did enjoy beer, is really neat for some of us that have been around for a while. So whoever the creative artists were that put this together, thanks for that.
That would be the wonderful cable and communications departments.
Absolutely done.
Thank you for your leadership.
Yes, thank you.
And the whole team.
Hope to see some of you at our events.
Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our quarterly Public Works report, and Mr. Paul Ome is here, working his way up to the podium.
Evening, Mayor, city council members. This is, I guess, the third quarter report for Public Works. So I just wanted to start by giving you a couple of updates on our current street projects. First one, the 2019 Street Reconstruction Project is going well. We're about 76% complete with the project now. As you recall, that's about a 12-mile street improvement project. We worked with Burnsville on a joint project through a joint powers agreement to reconstruct three of those streets as well, and collaboration with them just for efficiency and coordination. But the project's going well. We should have most of the project completed by the end of the month. The County Road 50 project, the big county project that's going on in the community this year, it's going okay. They're making some progress between the raindrops, but we're making some, we made some good progress here the last couple of weeks. Last week, the contractor continued working on grading and storm sewer installations and pouring curb and gutter from Highview Avenue over to Hamburg Avenue. This week, the contractor's planning to finish most of the storm sewer pipe improvement on the project and preparing the section of road from Highview Avenue to Hamburg Avenue for paving potentially next week. Going to have, we're going to try to have the county road open probably mid-November. The Dodd Flagstaff Roundabout is substantially complete. This is a very successful project for us. We constructed that project in about 10 weeks, one week earlier than we anticipated, so had a good contractor on this project. We did start work on June 17th and had it the roundabout open before school started. The Hamburg Avenue Reconstruction Project, that project is also substantially complete. That project was another successful project for the city. We installed water man, as you can see here, along a portion of the corridor, added a pedestrian trail and curb and gutter along Hamburg Avenue as well. So just a brief update on the development. They are currently under construction right now. We have 26 of them that include public improvements. The projects are staged, are under, you know, different stages of development right now, from either starting the grading of the project to utility work to final paving of the project. So a lot of different stages along the way. But it's a lot of coordination that we undertake between a lot of divisions here at the city to ensure that the project is built to city specifications and standards. So with that, those developments, we do eventually receive and accept the utilities in the streets for the community. But the, this graph would have showed the mileage of the streets that we've accepted over the years. This year, we're looking at about nine miles of streets, which is a lot more than we've accepted over the last six years. So, but some of those streets, we did plow this year, just because there were some residents that lived on it. But this is a big year for us to accept a lot of streets. Turning to environmental resources, a lot of things going on in this area. We've about six, a little over six acres of curly leaf pond weed was treated in Lake Marion and Orchard Lake this year to help that evasive species reduce that amount in those lakes. East Lake, there was 113 carp that were implanted with caves to identify the carp migration and where they're at, and if they're going up North Creek. This is, this data is used to try to control the population of carp and to try to manage it as best as we can. The program is a partnership between the Millan River Watershed and Dakota County AAS program as well. Staff has worked with 274 SWIP permits, that's a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program permit issued through the federal government, to make sure that the developers and the builders, or the developers and the contractors are building their developments per those requirements for erosion control. And we also have had 250 erosion control inspections to date onsite and with contracts, making sure that their erosion control systems are in compliance. Just wanted to highlight two environmental projects that we have going on this year. The South Creek Restoration Project at Hamburg, that's a 1,400-foot stream restoration project near the intersection of Hamburg and Lakeville Boulevard. The project was made possible The project was made possible by land swap by the property owner to the north. The project is designed to reduce the in-stream sedimentation loading, improve the quality and diversification of aquatic habitat in the DNR designated trout stream, and then convert about six acres of existing agricultural land to native vegetation buffer for the creek as well. So really trying to improve the quality of that creek as best as we can. The other project I wanted to highlight was the hydrostatic separator. This is off of 210th Street. This project is to help remove sediment and phosphorus before the stormwater ends up in the, in the South Creek. This is also helps meet us, meet our TMDL reduction standards for Vermillion River as well. So these two projects, I just wanted to highlight because there's a lot of state money that went into them, a lot of partnership. We had, and we had a great partner with Vermillion River without the money and the partnership that we had, those two projects would not have taken place. The organic drop-off site is, is going well. That opened on October 1st. We have over 600 households that already signed up for the organic drop-off. This is the food waste that for residents can drop off if they so choose instead of land, putting in their garbage and landfilling it. So residents are, who are still interested in signing up can sign up at Dakota County, and you can check their website for more information on that. Staff tried something new this year for buckthorn management. Around 100 goats were delivered to East Community Park Woodland on September 6th and spent about two and a half weeks out in this area munching on vegetation. The goats grazed in natural areas to control the buckthorn and other invasive species in the wetland, or in the woodland area. The woodland has been managed for over 10 years with brush removal by the city and chemicals, so we want to try something different at this location. Residents in the area showed strong support for their use and thoroughly enjoyed the goats as they worked. We hope to expand the goat grazing in other areas of East Community Park in 2020, and we're looking at other areas within the community to maybe utilize this activity as well. From education and volunteer perspective, we've been active this year. We have over, staff provided over 15 educational outreach activities this year. Largest one being the watershed cleanup day. Earlier this year, we had over 1,400 volunteers help clean up the community and learn about natural resources and environmental issues. We had 20 education stations at the central maintenance facility for that event. And staff has also partnered with the parks department, utility division, school districts to offer class, classes throughout the year focused on natural resources as well. The next educational outreach item is the Day Without Water. That's on October 18th, which is coming up shortly. If anybody's interested in attending that event, you can check out the city website for more information. The forestry department has been focused on Emerald Ash Bore this year. There's been 674 ash trees that were inventoried throughout the community, again, on top of all the other ones that we've done so far, and put into our inventory for potential EAB preventative injections in the future or removals. In total, approximately 800 park and boulevard trees were injected this year as part of the program, and over 700 private trees were injected as part of the city's ash injection partnership program as well. It was a big year also for oak, bur oak, blight, and oak wilt as well, as homeowners continue to call the forestry department to have them inspect their trees on their property as well. Moving on to the utility division, water treatment. We treated almost 1.8 billion gallons of water so far this year. As of September 30th, this is down about 13% from what it was 2018. The max day that we've, we saw was on, was on August 4th at 14.4 million gallons that day. It's all contributed basically because of the weather patterns that we've seen this, this summer. Utility Division also checked about a little over 10,800 Gopher State One tickets this year. That's way up from last year, about 23% higher. So a lot of activity going on in the community right now. And then Utility Department also replaced 873 water meters so far this year. Our goal is to replace about 1,200 this year, so I think we're going to make that mark though. This is just a quick graph showing the comparison for our 10-year average per capita water use versus what we saw this year so far up until September. So, again, we're tracking below our 10-year average again, just because we had such a wet year this year. And then lastly, we, our info infiltration project this year is substantially complete. We lined 5.8 miles of sewers with, throughout the community. The project is designed to keep surface water and groundwater from entering the sanitary sewer system, clean water. The clean water costs just as much to treat as wastewater does, so it's, it's in the best interest of the city to reduce the amount of clear water entering the system as best as we can. So, also the project helps reduce the risk of sewer backups as well. So, with that, if there's any questions, I'd be willing to happen to try to answer.
Thank you very much. Comprehensive report, lots going on. Council, any questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you for your work and your entire team.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll move on to item number six, our consent agenda. These are matters we consider to be routine in the business of the city. Mr. Miller, anything you'd like to highlight this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Three items tonight. Item 6Q is a recommendation for, to approve a master services agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated. This will be for the body worn cameras that the police department will be implementing. And this is the compilation or the completion of a pretty long project that the council and the police department have been going through. Item 6R is authorization to distribute a request for proposals or an RFP to develop the Keokuk Avenue property that Ms. Bissnebeck talked about for a potential fourth liquor store. This does not obligate the city by any means. This is just sending out a proposal to see what kind of development opportunities might be there for that fourth store. And then lastly, item 6S is a resolution accepting the donation of 92 tickets to the Police and Fire Ball. That was donated from the Lakeville Public Safety Foundation so that our public safety personnel and their guests could attend the fire safety ball at no cost, and so we appreciate that donation.
Thank you very much. I would also just like to mention item 6D is a donation from Jan Graf to the fire department. Her husband, John, passed away. John is, I believe, a prior council member from a number of years ago and served on the fire department for a number of years, and so we're grateful for that as well. Is there anyone in the audience or council, any comments, questions regarding any consent agenda item matters? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item number seven, which is a public hearing on the certification of delinquent utility accounts and assessing delinquent streetlight charges and nuisance abatement. Ms. Erickson, provide a staff report on this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. This is an annual process that we go through to certify to the 2020 property taxes, those delinquent utilities and nuisance abatements for things such as mowing and code enforcement issues. The total is 500 with service charge fees and interest through, from the date of adoption through the end of next year, would be about $556,000. One thing that we didn't include in the memo, and we'll be sure to include this next year is a comparison to prior years, so you understand how this certification is changing from year to year. It is significantly higher than last year, about 107 additional parcels being certified, at least at this point, and about 100, almost $100,000 more in delinquent charges. I'm a little surprised by it because a couple of years ago, we did implement, you know, the new online portal with credit card fees that we were waiving or absorbing the credit card fees, so thought that maybe that would be a payment mechanism that would work for a lot of people to pay their utility bills, but, so unfortunately, we're seeing a higher amount being certified. Now, we will receive a lot of payments between now and the actual date that we send it to the county, which is mid-November, and we anticipate probably assessing between 600 and 700 parcels versus, right now, it's at 1,056. So 300 to 400 will end up paying their bill before we actually send it to the county. With that, I'll stand for questions. Actually, I have one correction to make, I apologize. In looking at the resolution, item one, the total that's listed in the narrative there doesn't match the total certified, the little chart there, and so it should read assessment number 1386 and the amount of $556,260.66. So if we can make that correction when you approve the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, any questions, council? Otherwise, we'll go to the audience. This is a public hearing. Yes?
Sorry to put you on the spot. Maybe you didn't know this number. You were talking about the auto bill pay. Do you happen to know the percentage of people that have signed up?
I do not.
Okay, that's okay. You can tell me later. I just, in case you had it.
We will be providing some information on that, not tonight, but at the October workshop.
Okay.
I might, I might just add, that might be helpful just to make known publicly as just a bit of an advertisement for the opportunity to do that and just remind people that they have that opportunity.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this matter? We follow the same rules as citizen comments. You're provided up to three minutes, and if you are desiring to speak, please raise your hand, and when I call, come up to the podium and provide your name and address. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter tonight? Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Motion is to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Is there any further questions, discussion on this matter?
Mayor, move to approve resolution adopting assessments for the 2019 unpaid specialist charges.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Chair, roll call, please.
Volk.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eight, public hearing on the vacation of a public drainage and utility easement in Summers Creek. And I believe Mr. Moore is going to provide a brief review of this for us.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Yes, I promise this will be brief because this is a final plat, and normally, this would be on your consent agenda, but because we have the easement vacation public hearing at the city council versus the planning commission, in order to save the developers some additional time in processing, we have the public hearing. So I'll do a brief presentation. The location of Summers Creek final plat, as you can see from the overhead, it's south of Dodd Boulevard. It's adjacent to Hayes Avenue and 175th Street. If you've been by the site recently, you'll see that it is under construction. They have a grading permit with their preliminary plat. The final plat, which is this, is 46 single-family lots and 65 detached townhome lots, and the development is proposed in two phases. This is the phasing plan. The one final phase that'll be completed at a future date would be for an additional 38 single-family lots and 62 detached townhome lots. And this exhibit shows the reason why we are having the public hearing. The area in blue here is a drainage and utility easement that was obtained by Dakota County in 2013 at the time that the Dodd and Highview Roundabout project was underway and under construction, which included widening of Dodd Boulevard just to the area east of Hayes. The county purchased this easement from the property owner to provide ponding for the roadway improvements. With the development of Summers Creek, the additional ponding will be part of the development project that will cover not only that, that ponding for the Dodd Boulevard, but also the ponding for the development itself. So this easement is no longer needed. The county has basically agreed to deed this back to the city, and then the city would vacate this easement, and it would be incorporated into the plat of Summers Creek. So, staff is, in summary, recommending approval, and you have two resolutions before you this evening. One approving the final plat of Summers Creek and the other approving the vacation of the drainage and utility easement. And I can stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing no questions, this is a public hearing as well. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this matter, please raise your hand and come to the podium to share your comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Is there any further comments, questions regarding this matter? Is there a motion?
Lee.
Move to approve the resolution approving the Summers Creek final plat and the resolution approving the easement vacation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, chair, call the roll, please.
Anderson.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to number nine, public hearing on the capital improvement plan and street reconstruction plan, and our staff presentation will be, again, from Ms. Erickson.
Hello again.
Hello.
This item is to approve the 2020 through 2024 capital improvement plan, the street reconstruction plan, it's a five-year plan, as well as declare the city's intent to issue general obligation street reconstruction bonds and general obligation improvement bonds. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the staff and the council members for the significant amount of time and effort that has gone into preparing the CIP. We spend many months on it, and there's been a number of workshops in July and August to discuss all of the projects, and so there's been a lot of thoughtful consideration of the projects themselves, as well as the financial impacts on the city. I do want to make one note about the street reconstruction plan. It does state in the memo that it requires an affirmative vote of all council members present. I'm going to correct that. It's actually a two-thirds vote, and we'll make sure that that's correct in future memos. I confirm that with our bond council.
It's two-thirds or four-fifths?
Two-thirds for the street reconstruction plan.
Okay. Wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions at this time? Council? If this as well is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing that there is no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any further questions, comments on this matter? We've had a lot of conversation on the CIP and, and work sessions. There's been a lot of discussion already, but is there any further questions? Is there a motion?
Mayor, one, move to approve resolution adopting the five-year capital improvement plan, 2020 to 2024, and approving the issuance of general obligation capital improvement bonds. Two, move to approve the resolution adopting the five-year street reconstruction plan, years 2020 to 2024, and approving the issuance of general obligation street reconstruction bonds. And finally, number three, move to approve the resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Lakeville to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, chair, roll call, please.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye. Thank you very much, and, and thank you, Ms. Erickson, for your work as well as staff's work and the whole leadership team on this. Look forward to move things forward. Item 10 is our next item, Air Lake Station First Edition, and I believe that Mr. Bowman is here?
Yes.
There he is. I couldn't see you behind the, please come forward and tell us a little bit about the application.
I'm Christopher Bowman of 9758 198th Street here in Lakeville, Minnesota. I am the marketing company president of U-Haul here in Minnesota, and we're proposing to build a three-story, 130-plus-thousand-square-foot facility that will encompass all that will encompass all U-Haul's products and services, from storage to truck and trailer rentals, to RVs, covered RV storage, our, our U-Box portable moving and storage solution, and basically take care of Lakeville like it needs to be taken care of now. It's a large city, and it's growing quite rapidly, and we like to see all these housing developments going, and that's for sure.
Okay.
So, the project Bruce and I have been working on for a little over three years, I think, Bruce. So we've scouted many different properties, and this one kept coming back to be the best one for us, kind of gave us a good position as far as right on Cedar and County fifty there. So, yes.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Is there any questions, comments at this point for Mr. Bowman?
Across from Belzer's?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Hang tight, and we'll go to the staff report and...
All right.
And I believe Mr. Olson will be providing the staff report for us.
Evening, Mayor and member council, members of the council. There was a lot of, I would say, it's not paper anymore, but a lot of pages on this agenda item in your, in your electronic packets, and Mr. Bowman is correct, it is a project that we've been working on for, for quite a while, but it has, has come together, and I, and we think it's an appropriate use for this, this property. And the planning actions are numerous, and I'll get to those in a little bit, but just a general background, this is located at the southeast corner of Cedar Avenue, Lakeville Boulevard, AKA County Road Fifty. It is a property that's been owned by Air Lake Development, Inc. for quite a few years, and it is adjacent to other property they own, and it's been Zoned C2 commercial for, for quite some time. When I first came here a number of years ago, the, all this property was light industrial, with maybe the exception of a small piece on the corner. Air Lake Development sought and Planning Commission, City Council approved the rezoning and the land use plan amendment probably fifteen years ago now to guide it and zone it for commercial. It, this is one of those uses that kind of falls in between, and the council earlier adopted an ordinance amendment that allowed for self-storage facilities in the C2 district as, as well as the, the industrial district where they've been allowed historically. This shows an aerial of the map of the property in question. It is a single lot that's being platted right on the corner for the U-Haul site, and the rest of the property is going to be outlotted, but it, it, it shows where it's located. Obviously, Belzer Car Dealership is immediately to the west, and that very large building immediately to the south is the BTD Imperial Plastics building owned by the Fulford Group, and then the Pocat and S.A. uses on the north side of fifty and Cedar. This is a kind of a concept plan also as a representative of the preliminary plat, and, and the, the lot that's being platted with this action tonight is just the U-Haul site, and the rest of the property will be outlotted, and there is a concept plan where, where they would have multi-tenant buildings in here. This property really hasn't taken off as, as it was kind of anticipated a decade or so ago for, for retail, so it's seen, although there is a retail component to U-Haul, it is primarily a storage and, and vehicle rental facility, but they offer all the services that, that, that U-Haul provides. A lot of the time on this project, quite honestly, Cedar Avenue and County Road Fifty are both highways under the county's jurisdiction, so we spent a fair amount of time in numerous meetings, talking and meeting with the county, talking about how and where access would be provided. The final outcome will be, and it's a little bit unique, is that there'll be a right end only off of County Road Fifty, and then the full access will be a little bit further down the road, adjacent on the Air Lake Development property, but not on necessar- it isn't part of the U-Haul property that's being acquired now. So that's where the full access will be. So this was the, the access configuration that met the county's requirements, and that is what we're going to, and the developer has designed their site accordingly. And this is what the final plat will look like, one lot, one block, and then the rest being outlotted, which would come back to the council at a future date. The uses are, are multiple here, and it is a very large building. It's an acre in size, and it's three stories tall, so it's a, it's a one hundred and thirty thousand square-foot building. But in addition to that, the additional uses that Mr. Bowman made reference to, which are, are common in, in almost all U-Haul facilities, Mr. Maury and I have moved enough college kids back and forth to college over the last five years that we've become frequent customers of their Apple Valley store, but this is going to have both truck and, and trailer rental, and the bluish kind of turquoise areas on the site plan are where those types of vehicles will be displayed, and if you've ever been there, they come and go on a daily basis, and so that is, it's constantly changing in terms of the number and, and the type of vehicles. And then the other use that involves outdoor store is the RV camper storage area. So people in town that own RVs that don't have places to park, or excuse me, store them, especially in the, in the off-season, will able, rent a, a space here from U-Haul. It will be a canopy, so it's open on the sides, but it will be protected above, so it'll just be, it's not an enclosed building per se, but a canopy for, for RV storage. And then the rest of the site is just customer parking, employee parking, and, and circulation. I would point out that the building, and we'll get to a, a slide in, in a, in a little bit, but both of these uses for the RV and the truck and trailer require the interim use permits, which are kind of very similar to a conditional use permit whereby we look at where they're being, those storage areas are being provided, and there's still, still pride adequate access and parking for the rest of the, the rest of the use that's going on there. And this is a landscape plan. It's, it's a very visible corner lot, but there is going to be significant landscaping along both Lakeville Boulevard, County Road Fifty, as well as Cedar Avenue, and it will obviously enhance the site. And then finally, this is what the building looks like. It is consistent with the ordinance amendment that the council made recently that allows for precast buildings to utilize the thin brick type of construction. So three of the four elevations of the building to meet, in order to meet the sixty-five percent grade-A material, this is the front that will be facing County Road Fifty, and then you've got the east and west end caps of the building that will be one facing Cedar Avenue and the other one facing the property to the east. And then this is the back, this is the only elevation, this is going to be backing up to, next to the BTD building, and will be very secluded and, and not very visible at all. So the building meets the requirements of our, all of our ordinances. So again, in summary, there's a final preliminary and final plat before the council for this. Another vacation is Mr. Maury alluded to in his project earlier. However, the planning commission held the public hearing. There was some old easement along Cedar Avenue that had been acquired years ago. It's being replaced by the plat now, so it's no longer needed. A conditional use permit in the C2 district, buildings are allowed up to a maximum of thirty-five feet. If anything above thirty-five feet requires a conditional use permit, and it requires the building be set back far, a little bit further to accommodate that additional height. This building's right at forty feet, and it is, the site is large enough, and it is set back be, in additional amount to factor in the additional building height. And then finally, the two interim use permits that allow both the storage and display of rental trucks and trailers on the front side of the property, and then the canopy-covered RV storage in the rear behind the building, between their building and, and the BTD. Planning commission held a public hearing on this application at their September nineteenth meeting, and unanimously recommended approval. There was no public comment received at the, at the planning commission hearing. So with that, I'll stand for any questions as well as Mr. Bowman. I know he has his engineer here today as well, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hellier.
Okay. This is probably a question for you. Do you know how, how this building compares in height to interstate storage and/or, the name escapes me, the one next to Hasi Arena?
Oh, yes. I think Interstate, the new one up near...
Little.
It's, this one's taller?
No.
That one is a little, little above forty.
Okay.
And I think that has four levels? Yeah, that has four levels. So it, and I didn't point out, the interior space, most of the building is climate-controlled in, interior storage, so you basically drive your vehicle into the building, and whatever you're loading or, you know, retrieving or, or putting, and you take it out and put it on an elevator and, and, and store it in your, in your storage space. So other than the showroom and, and the retail store area on the ground level, everything else in the building will be rented interiors, self-storage.
Okay. I don't know who should answer this question. Legally, you know, we granted the permission to have more display. What type of precedent does that set for other businesses that want to expand their outdoor display? I don't know who's, who can answer that.
We do have a limit in the ordinance of thirty percent, and so there are both of these, there are two different types of outdoor storage, and they're, they were both capped at thirty percent, so that's what the ordinance provides as a maximum. You couldn't, you couldn't, for example, go fifty percent or, or even higher than thirty percent, even, even with an interim use permit.
Okay. And just to confirm, this building is three stories?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Lee.
Is the rendering the true coloration of this building?
It's pretty close. There are a couple, and I had a brick sample, and I'm not sure it was the exact, but it, it's a darker reddish-brown brick color that, that the majority of, of the building's going to be. The exposed precast wall on the backside will be a little bit lighter, and then they have a buff-colored, lighter, it's kind of simulated rock-type masonry surface for portions of the first level.
So if I'm not mistaken, Apple Valley has a lot more orange.
Yes. This does not, and I, Mr. Bowman can, can speak to that a little bit, but there is, and it's identified on the plan as such, on the front of the building, there is a, a canopy, a metal canopy that extends from the building. I'm not sure on the exact dimension, but that is identified as U-Haul green, but there are no, and I imagine there might be some incorporated into the signage, but the building itself will not have any orange on it.
Thanks.
I did have a question about the road access, and not so much on this parcel with the right end and the new full exit entrance that's down a little bit, but does this, I'm assuming this does not impact the access to the other, to the north side of County Road Fifty at this time?
Key word being "at this time," yes.
Okay.
This is kind of an interim condition. When those properties develop on the, on the north side, there may be more changes to the access situation, but the idea was, and, and this property, the Pocat access to the north is going to remain the same as it is today.
Okay. And the, the reasoning for this is the distance between that particular entrance and the intersection?
Correct.
I assume.
It's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion?
All right. Move to approve a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Air Lake Station First Edition, a resolution vacating a public, or excuse me, two, a resolution vacating a public utility easement, three, a conditional use permit to allow a building height greater than thirty-five feet in the C2 district, and four, interim use permits to allow outdoor rental of trucks and trailers and outdoor storage of recreation vehicles in the C2 district and adoption of findings of fact.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Can I sit down for a quick?
Yes, please. Come forward.
I want to thank the mayor, the council members, but I want to point out, I work with a lot of different planning departments through the metro area down to Rochester, Mankato, and you guys should be very proud of your planning department and how they address questions, they help people through things, explain the ordinances, they top quality.
Thank you very much.
I just want to thank that, or I want to point that out to you guys, that, you know, everyone there did a phenomenal job, and it was actually a pleasure to work with all of them through this long process. And I believe Bruce said today, the corn has been harvested, the machinery is there, we start building soon. We should have the roof on the building by the end of January, and we're hoping to open June first, somewhere in there.
That's awesome.
So thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks for persisting. Welcome to Lakeville. Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments.
Construction's so fast.
Thank you very much, staff.
Jimmy John's best. Just boxes.
Next on our agenda is item number eleven, and it, it's just seems like so few words for such a major project, but this is, I believe, the final action that we need to take to adopt the two thousand forty comprehensive plan after the Met Council has approved it, if that's the correct terminology.
You're, you're right on, Mayor. Thank you. This has been a long process, a little bit longer than the past. It is the final step in this process, which has been a little over two and a half years. We started this in February of two thousand seventeen. We kicked this whole process off, and here we are. I'm going to keep my presentation brief. As you recall, at your March fourth meeting, our planning consultant, Dan Lick, provided an overview to the council of our comp plan, and that was, the action that evening was for the city council to authorize submittal of the plan to the Met Council. So the plan that you reviewed and authorized for submittal that evening and this plan that you have here this evening are substantially the same. Just as a quick reminder, here are all the components that go into this comprehensive plan. It is a very extensive document. You have land use, you have parks, you have transportation, you have sanitary sewer, water, stormwater, wetland, and then kind of some ancillary documents, the capital improvement plan, the downtown development guide, and our envisioned Lakeville plan. So all of these are, in effect, components, or at least part of the, what makes up the Lakeville's two thousand forty comprehensive plan. Again, as a quick summary, throughout this two-and-a-half-year process, we have had over or exactly twenty meetings that have been part of this process from the public perspective in terms of city council, planning commission, the economic development commission. It's, it also involved the Lakeville School Board in, in both meetings and work sessions. And then we also had ten open houses over that process to get input and to present the plan to the public, to property owners, to residents. So there has been a lot of review of this plan, there's been a lot of input on this plan, this is a community plan.
If I may interrupt, I would just add to that slide, I do believe you also made other presentations, like to the Rotary Club and...
Yes.
I believe, I, I don't know who else, but there's, it's comprehensive in terms of how people had an opportunity to be involved.
Thank you, Mayor. I did, I did presentations to Lakeville Lions, to the Rotary Club, to the seniors across, across the street, to realtors, to, I'm, I'm probably forgetting some, and for those, I apologize, but yes, there was numerous presentations and lots of good questions that came out of those presentations, so...
Thank you very much.
And so here we are, and just quickly, between March and, and now, what transpired is the city submitted the plan to the Met Council. We did get a couple of review letters back from the Met Council that said our plan was incomplete. The areas where they felt it was incomplete were basically related to sanitary sewer, land use, and housing, and it was really just to provide additional information, clarification, there was some modification to some tables in, in the plan. It was really to get it in a format such that the Met Council felt it was acceptable. The information was generally there, they just wanted it in their format. I'm learning from other communities, especially some of our Dakota County communities, that getting by with only two incomplete letters was actually pretty good. Other communities are still waiting out there. I will point out that me and my staff did go to the Met Council's Community Development Committee meeting. We were on the same agenda as the city of Minneapolis, so that was quite interesting. And we were also on that same agenda when the Met Council formally approved our plan on September twenty-fifth. So this is the land use plan. This is probably the biggest, if you will, or certainly the most interesting to others who view this document. It has lots of color to it. This is the plan that includes the land uses, existing and future land uses in the area. And again, just want to quickly point out that our new land use designation, corridor mixed use, is new to this plan. It's predominantly in the Cedar corridor, generally in this location where there is to be a future transit station along the red line, and then generally up here in the Cedar and Dodd intersection area. There's also, also some... There's also, also some, excuse me, some CMU land use designations along I-35 near the transit station up at Kendrick Park and Ride. So this is a new designation. We have to, as you know, include as part of our zoning map and zoning ordinance update process that will follow the completion and approval of our comprehensive plan. We have to provide that new CMU district. We're very excited about that, we're very proud of that, and looking forward to coming back to the planning commission and city council with those standards and those uses. And we should hopefully be starting to have those discussions next month at work sessions. So what I want to do before I turn it over to the city council, again, I did this in the past, I want to have some thank yous. As I've said in the past, as you well know, this is my third and final comp plan with the city of Lakeville.
Never say never.
And I do, and it is not my work. This is work of a lot of people that were involved, and I thank them for their help that they've provided. Our planning consultant, Dan Lick, did an outstanding job with this plan. Planning and community and economic development staff, I'd especially like to call out associate planner Chris Jensen, who really shepherded through the details and coordination with the Met Council on this. Engineering staff, in particular, city engineer Zach Johnson, who coordinated the efforts with our planning, or excuse me, with our engineering consultants related to the transportation plan, sanitary sewer, water, and natural resources plan. Obviously, the city council and the planning commission. You guys had a lot of meetings, a lot of work sessions, provided us with a lot of input and direction through this two-and-a-half-year process. And finally, I'd like to thank our Met Council District 16 representative, Wendy Wolf, who, as we were trying to get our complete letter from the Met Council, stepped in and she provided some assistance so we could finally get through that process and get on an agenda and get approved by the Met Council. So a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of people involved, and I really thank them for their efforts. So in summary, planning department staff is recommending approval of a resolution adopting Lakeville's 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and I can stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions?
I just want to extend my thanks to you and everybody that you listed for putting up with us and our needling and changes of all the plans and all of our discussions. So I really appreciate it. It was obviously my first comp plan, but it was eye-opening, so I appreciate all the work that you guys did to put it together.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other comments? I, I would just add my thanks as well. I, I was pondering, as you were talking about the meetings and, and the opportunities that people had to be involved, and I would guess that somewhere along the way, we probably, if we actually went back and counted the number of touchpoints, the number of people that are involved, it's probably over 1,000.
Sure.
And I don't know what that number would be, maybe you know that number.
I don't, but you're probably right.
I think that this is my first time through this as well, and, and I'm very impressed with how the process worked, and, and it's, it's amazing to think about how comprehensive it is. And, and I know that it's, fits into the whole kind of tapestry of the Met Council and a lot of work that they do, and there's all kinds of, different kinds of feelings about the Metropolitan Council, but I too am particularly grateful for Wendy Wolf and how she helps us navigate things and be, supports and encourages us as we were full members of the folk, the, the full metropolitan area. So I appreciate your work. And, and I do think it's fair to call you out in terms of your leadership with this whole process, and I know I don't want to leave other people out, but, but it does take a person to be the champion and to do something like this, so I'm very grateful.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I think we have everything we need, so is there a motion on this matter? Lee.
Move to approve a resolution approving this, sorry, wrong, one, I didn't get the right language here. Move to approve a resolution adopting the 2040 Comprehensive Plan as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hellier.
Motion carries, and we will now move into the next stage of that work. Look forward to that. Item 12 is an ordinance amending Title 8 of the Lakeville City Code concerning false alarms and summary ordinance for publication, and we did have some conversation about this at a work session, and you're here to give us a brief report.
Yes. One question that came up at the workshop was whether or not if a property had a false alarm, that had multiple false alarms already in place that had been charged by the city, and then we adopt this ordinance, would that start over for the year? For example, if they had three already charged, and then they had a fourth false alarm, would they go back to the first false alarm as far as fees that would be charged? And no, they would not. They would be billed the fourth false alarm fee. And so, but the difference with an ordinance being passed is that we wouldn't be able to certify the first three false alarm fees, but starting with the fourth one, we could in that instance. So, so the fee schedule won't change, but it'll give us the ability to certify the unpaid false alarms to the property taxes. And so where, earlier, we had the unpaid delinquent utilities as well as code enforcement issues, this will be another item that will be, hopefully not, but if we need to, be bringing back to the council for certification.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments, questions on this matter? Volk.
So you dived right in, and I guess what I'm thinking is, is maybe just a little background on how we got to the false alarms and why we have this ordinance, just for the public's knowledge, because we kind of just dived right into the meat of it, but maybe a little background for them so they can understand how we got to this point and why we needed an ordinance.
Sure. We've obviously had a number of false alarms over the years, and we deploy resources of fire department and police department, and they go to a place of business or a home and make sure that, you know, is the, is the alarm, is it a false alarm or is it a legitimate alarm? And if it's a false alarm, you know, we still deploy the resources. So the first one, there is no charge for the deployment, but starting with the second charge, it's $35, and then it escalates from there. And we did not have the ability to collect those fees. We would charge them, but if the property owner did not pay them, we didn't have a mechanism in place to be able to collect them, such as like the delinquent utilities or nuisance abatements. And so by passing this ordinance, that will give us that ability to certify those unpaid false alarm charges.
Mayor?
Yeah, please.
And then just for process, would that, would we be doing that at the same time then as the utilities, so instead of, so as a line item, it would be utilities?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, yeah, and fire alarms. Okay, so it would be all one, and we do that twice a year?
We do...
Or only once a year?
Twice a year.
Okay.
We do certify in the spring as well to capture any of those delinquent accounts in the spring as well as the fall.
Thank you.
Good questions. Any other questions? I, I do have one. How are we going to communicate, assuming this is passed, how are we going to communicate it to the community? Is there a communication plan, or?
We do publish this on the website, the ordinance change, and certainly if the council or the city administrator, Miller, would prefer that it's included in the focus or some other mechanism, we certainly can do that. Is there a preference?
I...
Mayor, I might add, when we send letters out to people notifying them that they'd have a delinquency, this will now be in those letters as well. And just like it is with our, I'm assuming it is with our other, the delinquent utilities you approved tonight, in those letters, it would say, if you do not pay this, then it could be certified to your taxes. We would add that language to these letters as well.
Right, right.
I would, I would think that would be helpful.
Mayor, maybe, and you can tell me if this is just too picky, but is it a possibility that this ordinance could be something that's in a truck, that if they go to the second false alarm, they can actually, or even the first, actually give them the document and give them the heads up? Either correct this, you know, problem that you're having, or these are the fees that could be attached to it? Or is that just too?
I guess I wonder if, if we want the individuals being deployed to be worried about that piece of it versus why they're there.
Okay.
I think that might be, I kind of agree with that. I, I do think that we can, I would encourage staff to be creative in terms of how we're communicating, and I think that the more, just like with the utilities and other types of charges, the more we can communicate and be clear about what's going to happen. Redundancy is good in the communication, so appreciate that.
So let me follow with, we don't write an actual ticket, then?
We receive the information, finance department receives the information from either police department or the fire department to bill out that there was a false alarm.
They don't write anything at the premise?
I don't believe so.
At the time that they're...
No.
Okay.
They would just be responding to the call.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I would just say, or just encourage you to reach out, maybe have the chamber put it in their newsletter, because I'd assume that most of these are businesses, so...
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? Is there a motion?
Move to approve an ordinance amending Title 8 of the city code regarding false alarms and the summary ordinance for publication as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further questions, discussion? Show our roll call, please.
Volk.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hellier.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move to items 13 and 14, unfinished business and new business. Council, any matters for discussion this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to announcements. Mr. Miller, any announcements?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Mayor.
Yes.
It's a little bit of personal privilege, but I had a fire incident in my home yesterday. So first, I want to thank the Lakeville Fire Department for spending countless hours figuring out what the problem was. But two, I want to encourage anybody, if you have heat in your wall, there may not be a flame, to just call the fire department anyway because you could have a problem. So I learned a lot yesterday, so thank you very much to, to the, the fire department, so...
Thank you very much. And as far as my announcements, our next regular council meeting is on Monday night, October 21st, at 7:00 PM. Any further matters for this evening, council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.